That is a green light. Once again, welcome to the City of Seal Beach Planning Commission meeting of September 18th, 2013. And we'll call the meeting to order and join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Roll call, please.
Planning Commissioner Steve Sloan.
Here.
Vice Chair Esther Cummings.
Here.
Planning Commissioner Robert Goldberg.
Here.
Planning Commissioner Patty Campbell.
Here.
Chair Sandra Massalavitt.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a form.
Thank you. Approve of the agenda is the next item on the agenda. By motion of the Planning Commission, this is a time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda, rearrange the order of the agenda, and provide an opportunity for any member of the Planning Commission or staff to request an item be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Is there a Planning Commissioner that wants to rearrange the agenda?
I move for approval.
Second?
I second.
Please vote. Five to zero. Thank you. Oral communications. At this time, members of the public may address the Planning Commission regarding any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the commission cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone, state their name for the record, and all speakers shall be limited to a period of five minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Joyce Frost Parquet, Old Town Seal Beach. And I know the housing element is coming up again, so I'm down here because I'd like to see that more people are notified of this housing element coming up to city planning that they will vote on. The last time, when I was very annoyed of the 10,000-pound microwave dish, City Councilwoman Ellery Deaton was on the planning committee and she got it extended to 500 feet. But I'd like to see it extended to 1,000 feet, or maybe more, because I was told that only two people in Harrow Point got the notice. Two people. And I know that you've got it in the Seal Beach paper, but if you go around town, a lot of the papers are out there in their yards for a week, or more. Not everybody reads that paper. And not everybody knows when certain meetings are coming. I happen to live in Old Town. I walk around. I come by to see what's up there for the agenda. Well, not everybody can do that, especially in Harrow Point. But I'd like for you to see about a way to make a resolution that it goes to 1,000, up to 1,000 feet, so that the people that live further away get the notice, and in their house, and not in some paper that sits on the driveway for a week. If that's possible, I will keep coming back, like I did before, until it's done. So who's in charge? The planning director, he can start that? Or Commissioner?
We'll take it under advisement.
Pardon me?
We'll take it under advisement.
Under advisement, okay, good. Because I will come back until everybody in this town gets a notice, if it's anywhere near their house. Now, two people in Harrow Point, it's not enough notice. It's not. And even with the homeless shelters, how many people in Lees World got the notice? It has to be more notice given. And then the other thing that's really, can cause great problems, is that trail over there where the bikers go. And I don't know, it's in the planning department, that there's a triathlon coming up, but I would like to know if they have a permit and if they have insurance, because somebody's going to get hurt. You should hear the people talk about those bikers. Everybody has a right to be on that trail, not just the bikers. And there are all kinds of people on that trail, and somebody's going to get hurt. And I'm not sure who's going to pay for it. Now, if they're going to have this big triathlon, are we going to have people down there to keep the walkers and the baby strollers and the dog people? I mean, are they going to be let, so that they can't go on? I'd like to see something done about that trail. I don't want to have to do the coastal commission and make it open. It used to be five miles an hour, five miles an hour. I've told Sean, it's five miles an hour. Everybody is entitled to be on that trail. If there is any bikers on a race or on a triathlon, it needs to be shut down. They need to have a permit and they need to have insurance. Insurance.
I think if you make a visit to the Parks and Recreation Department, they could probably give you the details you're looking for.
I think it comes from the planning department with the permit. I think.
I don't think so, but you might want to check that out.
All right. Thank you.
Joyce? And I don't think there's anyone else that wants to speak. So we'll move on to the consent calendar, and it's to approve the corrected Planning Commission meeting minutes of August 7th, 2013. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Please vote. Five to nothing. Thank you. Okay, we have no scheduled matters, but we do have a public hearing. On general plan amendment 13-4, the city's housing element for 2013 through 2021. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, this evening, the staff report will be given by our consultant, John Douglas.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. It's nice to be back in Seal Beach again. The housing element draft that's before you tonight, it's been a long process, as you know. What we are asking from the Planning Commission tonight is to recommend approval of a resolution recommending city council adoption of the housing element for the new 2013 to 2021 planning period. Just to briefly recap the process that has happened with this draft, on April 3rd, your commission held a joint study session with the ad hoc committee to review the draft document. On April 22nd, the city council had a study session to review the document, and at that April 22nd meeting, the council authorized us to submit this draft up to State HCD for review, which is required of every draft housing element. The state had 60 days to review the document, and in June, late June, they sent their review letter to us with a few minor comments. The most noteworthy of their comments were having to do with the rezoning that was committed to in the prior housing element. And at the time of HCD's review letter, the city council had not yet adopted the zone change for the Accurate Storage property. So that was the main issue of substance in HCD's letter. Well, as you know, the city council subsequently approved the zone change for Accurate Storage, and so that issue is now a moot point. And we believe that we have fully addressed all of the concerns of HCD. The other issue of substance that they mentioned in their letter and in our phone conversation is that although the city's RENA number for the new cycle is only two housing units, they encouraged us to show for our objectives for the new planning period, a higher number commensurate with the city's capacity reflecting the rezoning of the Accurate Storage property. And so we revised the draft housing element to include an objective of 80 units for the new planning period, with 10% of those in the affordable categories. It's important to point out what those quantified objectives mean and what they obligate the city to do. Quantified objectives are a planning target. There's no obligation on the city's part, just as with the RENA. No obligation to issue building permits, provide financial subsidies in connection with those quantified objectives. It's a planning target. And so, at HCD's request, we amended the quantified objectives to reflect a density of 20 units per acre on the Accurate Storage property, which is approximately four acres. So what that means is that when the next housing element comes around, the city will have to do an evaluation of its accomplishments, just as we did with this housing element, looking backwards to the one that was just approved a year or so ago. So at that time, if development has occurred on the Accurate Storage property, then we will describe what has been accomplished in the terms of the number of units and so forth. And that's the extent of the city's obligation. So, bottom line, we believe that the city has fully addressed the concerns of HCD. And so if this housing element is adopted by the council in its present form, it has to go up to HCD for final review as an adopted housing element. And at that time, HCD will tell us whether they have any remaining concerns. We don't think they will, but if they do, that's fine. We can continue to work to address their questions with the council's blessing. So, with regard to the rest of the housing element, there are a lot of new numbers in the Chapter 2 section of the document, because it reflects a complete revamping of all the census data and things like that, that are part of the needs assessment. None of those new census data numbers or any other data numbers really have any substantive policy consequences for the city, because the most important portion of that is the RENA. And so we've demonstrated that we accommodated the RENA for the previous housing element, and so there's no carryover into this new cycle. And so the Accurate Storage site provides all of the capacity that we need for the new cycle as well. So while there's a lot of new numbers in the needs assessment portion of the housing element, they don't affect city policy, and that's the important thing to keep in mind. With regard to city policy, there are no changes proposed to the zoning ordinance, no changes to land use standards. There are some minor changes with regard to programs that were funded by the Redevelopment Agency. Redevelopment Agency funding has gone away, and so the city's funding capacity that was associated with the Redevelopment Agency is gone. So there are some minor changes to the programs that were funded previously by Redevelopment Agency. So that's really it in terms of what is new in this document and what its policy implications are. So I will close my presentation there and respond to any questions that you might have.
Are there questions from the Commissioners? Should we start with Dr. Goldberg?
Yeah. I'd like to ask some questions regarding our quantified objectives on page 82, just Table V1. And I think Mr. Douglas was trying to address this, but I just want to see if I understand it fully. This table indicates that instead of us having to provide for two low-income units in the cycle, our objectives are for four in this table. And if I'm understanding you correctly, is that there was a directive from HUD? I don't know if that was in writing or verbally, because I didn't read anything in the HUD letter regarding that, but that they wanted us to match our objectives to our capacity? Is that, did I paraphrase you correctly?
Yes. It's not a lengthy comment in their letter, but on the second page, under point number three of their letter, they have a paragraph that says, "Table V1," which is the table showing the quantified objectives, "should be revised to reflect the realistic number of units expected to be produced over the full eight-year planning period based on the housing elements implementation programs, as well as private planned activities." So what we did is to look at the city's land inventory, which is primarily the Accurate Storage site, four acres that is now zoned to allow 20 units per acre. And so, in the land inventory portion of the housing element, we showed that site, we showed its size, we showed its zoning and its capacity of 80 units. And so the quantified objectives table is in sync with what we showed as our theoretical capacity on that property. With regard to the affordable units, the four in the low category and four in the moderate category, that is based on a 10% assumption. If there were an 80-unit project, and if the developer was willing to set aside 10% of the units as affordable, then that's what the result would be. As I mentioned earlier, there's no obligation on the city's part to require that level affordability. It would be desirable for the city to ask if a development comes forward, if it is feasible to include affordable units in the project. Unless there's subsidy funding, it's very unlikely that it would be feasible to include affordable units. And so that would be a discussion between the city and the developer at that time. So as I mentioned before, it is a planning goal, and it does not obligate the city to approve or require affordable units on that site.
There was a couple of comments regarding review of what our rezoning is and what our true capacities are. Back in July, staff made a presentation to the council regarding the maximum units that could be built at Accurate Storage, given the other constraints, despite the zoning, that there were other constraints, and their conclusion was that a maximum of 65 units could be built there, given the other constraints in our zoning law. So continuing to represent the potential units as 80 doesn't reflect that assessment. I appreciate that, that's still, I mean, we still have, and I'm looking at Table B1 on page 97, we still have other potential units, 32 units at DWP and potentially five units at Pacific Coast Highway, corner there at Seal Beach Boulevard. So, I mean, we still have approximately 100 unit potential there. But the other thing that should be potentially cooking is that at that meeting in July, the council directed staff to come back with an assessment as to whether a private unit development overlay on the Accurate Storage site could be done as well. And my understanding was that would also limit the units to less than 65, because the point there would be to decrease the amount of area that would be developed. And so I'm just a little concerned that we're making a commitment of 80, when we know the maximum there is 65, and the council, we don't know what the PUD options are yet, and I understand it's going to be presented soon. They actually, you know, limit the number of houses there to 30, or who knows, 25 or 30. Obviously, the council could figure this all out when they get the PUD, but I'm just a little concerned that we're maybe overcommitting, because we don't, you know, that's my concern there.
If I may, it's not a commitment. As John has said a couple of times, it's a planning target, so much as if you were to just kind of remove all constraints, theoretically, as he said, they're just based on the raw zoning, it could be 100. But there's no commitment to build to that level, nor any obstacle to applying other standards that might decrease the number of there. So it's really just a kind of raw calculation.
Let me ask you this, then, is the real controlling numbers of the RENA, then? I mean, in terms of what we're legally, the minimum zoning, the minimum?
The RENA for this period is two. So that's going to be covered, even if all of the planned unit overlay was somehow, was applied to the property? The two units would be caught in that. So there's no concern about the RENA driving us at this point. And this is not, and this is not a constraint. This table's not a constraint in any way in terms of what happens there later, or it doesn't say we can't go below that number.
What I'm saying is the ultimate yardstick as to whether we're compliant with HCD rules would be our having zoning that facilitates the RENA, rather than this table?
Right, which the city has already done in compliance with the previous housing element.
Okay.
This isn't, if I understood John correctly, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, this is simply, HCD wanted this table, the goals, the objective numerical goal to match the land inventory. We have a land inventory which says four acres of 20 units per acre. They just wanted the two numbers to match. And so they revised it to match, but it does not drive the actual development of that property. What's going to drive that, as you've already pointed out, is the underlying zoning, along with the development standards and any other potential development standards that get brought in as a planned unit development, and then what the developer actually brings forward, because we don't know what the developer may bring forward, but, you know.
Well, the other thing is this 80 isn't all from Accurate Storage, because that other table I referenced, it has 32 from DWP and five from another possibility. So 80 isn't our total in our plan there. It's over 100 potentially with DWP.
That's right. Yeah. Yes.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification.
Anything else?
One other, on page 71, under Program 1A. Program 1A, the last sentence, it references, it says, "City is fully urbanized," and then it references a fair share of future residential growth of two housing units for this planning period. Shouldn't that be our total RENA? Not just the low income? Because this has to do with housing, all of our housing, this is not just the low-income housing. So our total RENA, I don't remember what our total RENA is, but it's more than two?
It's two.
The total RENA, so there's no moderate and no?
No, it's, hold on, let me just make sure I don't misspeak here. Yes, the total is two units, one in the very low-income category and one in the low-income category.
So there's no moderate or?
No moderate, no above moderate.
Okay.
And by the way, just FYI, there's a few other cities in Southern California that had the same two-unit RENA. I mean, Malibu for one, Hermosa Beach for another, and there might be a couple of others that I'm not remembering right now.
And just to kind of refresh everybody's recollection, when it says we have a RENA obligation of two units, low and extremely low income, all we have to do to satisfy that requirement is zone at the minimum density, which is 20 units per acre. So that's why rezoning that Accurate Storage site at that requirement fully meets the obligation.
Thank you. Thank you. That's it. Commissioner Campbell?
Yes, I have one small point. Maybe it's a little stickler for me. On page 14, they talk about community context. That first paragraph, the last two sentences, it says, "The largest population increase occurred with the development of the Lees World Retirement Community, beginning in 1962, which currently houses more than 9,000 senior residents. The 2012 population of the city was estimated at 24,354." In between those two sentences, if you're going to talk history of this city, you should put in at least a sentence on College Park East, because in 1966, it was opened up to 5,000 residents. That's when the development began. We're 20% of this city. I think we should be noticed in this housing element.
Okay. Thank you very much. Esther? Commissioner Sloan?
Just one small point. Back to Table 5.1. I'm hearing on page 82. The allocation is for one very low and one low-income unit, right? We have one extremely low and none in the very low category in this table. Is that right?
Yes. The reason there is because of a complexity of state law. The extremely low category is in housing element law, but it's not explicitly part of the RENA. But what state law says is that extremely low is a subset of the very low category. And it says you can identify your need in the extremely low, the portion of the very low that's in the extremely low, by just assuming that it's half, half in the extremely low and half not. Or you can go through an elaborate analysis of census data. So what most cities just do is they put half of that very low number into the extremely low category. Half of one is, I mean, you have to do a whole unit, so that's why we put one unit in the extremely low category.
Okay.
Okay, no other questions? Shall we take a vote? Is that the next order of?
Is this scheduled as a public hearing item?
Oh, that's right. This is a public hearing. Would anybody like to speak? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. And what is the pleasure of the commission? Would you like to take a vote?
I'd like to move for approval.
Second?
Madam Chair, if I may ask for clarification on the motion, does that include a change to the draft element that recognizes the development of College Park East in 1965?
Yes, it should include it, yes. 1966.
Thank you for the clarification.
I second the motion.
As amended?
As amended, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Please vote.
Thank you.
Five to zero. Okay, the housing element is adopted.
It is recommended.
Or it's recommended for approval.
Recommended for approval by the city council. That will be scheduled as a public hearing advertised in the paper for a future date.
I misspoke once again. Okay. Our next item on the agenda is the Director's Report.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. You have before you a planning officers' forum. It's an annual session that is sponsored by the Planning Directors Association of Orange County. The theme for this year is growing older but staying young. There's a number of topics that the association decided should be most appropriate for this year, and as we grow stronger. So I can fund three planning commissioners to attend. The date is October 24th. It's at the Nixon, President Richard Nixon Library in Yarbo Linda. It's an all-day session starting at 7:30. I would imagine that's probably more of an early opening session and registration. And lunch is provided.
And it is all day. So I recommend the session, if you can get away for the day or even part of the day, it's really very helpful, and you'll get to meet other planning commissioners as well.
Your planners, too.
City planners, too.
City planners and planning commissioners.
I've attended this, one of these before.
Yes, very good. I already told Crystal I'll go, but if there are three that have, that would like to go, I'll pull out since I've been there before, but.
My part would encourage at least the two incoming commissioners to attend so that they can get acclimated to the planning environment. And there will be probably almost every planning director in Orange County at the meeting as well. I'll be there. I have another session afterwards for the planning directors who are chair of the 2014 APA conferences coming up next year at the Disneyland Hotel.
I've attended the last two years or three, two, two or three, I can't remember. Anyway, so I think it'd be better if the newer folks took the slots, but if there's an empty slot, I can probably go.
Crystal, if you'd like to put my name down.
It's a very interesting day.
Commissioner Goldberg, you think you can get away yet?
I don't know, I have to check my works. That's a work gap, isn't it, right?
Yeah, it is. It's a work gap.
It's Thursday.
I may not be able to get home.
Let's check. I've got my short calendar here, detailed calendars at home.
Okay. All right. Let Crystal know or Jim know if you, you want to go. Anything else?
Yes, our long-awaited local coastal program. I am placing it on an upcoming city council agenda for awarding of a, a contract to a firm located up north. They're establishing a satellite office in Long Beach to assist us with our local coastal program. So hopefully that should be going before city council next month.
To PMC?
To PMC, yes. And again, it will be for the purpose of awarding the contract to this firm to assist us with the preparation of the document. And that's it.
Any updates on DWP? Dr. Goldberg made some reference to coastal commission and?
Staff, along with the subcommittee and with the developer, we've met with the coastal staff on a number of occasions. And it's supposed to be scheduled for hearing next month, October 9th through the 11th, I believe, and it's in San Diego. We're not sure as regards to the recommendation. It doesn't appear to be favorable. In any case, the, the recommendation probably from the developer would be that he'll continue it so that he can strategize for an upcoming meeting.
Did they get any direction in terms of why the coastal commission wasn't happy with the plan?
Well, it, it all stems to the, the visitor-serving activities that were anticipated, apparently.
We can all rationalize on that one. Okay. Thank you. Any commissioners' concerns and interest, questions?
Couple of questions. I'd like to follow up on the speaker that we had. The triathlon that's coming up next month, did they obtain a special event permit for that?
They're in the process and they work through the recreation division.
Oh, they're, they're getting that through the recreation commission, not through your office?
No, I didn't say commission, it's the recreation division, the staff and Parks and Rec.
Okay, but they will get a special event permit for that?
If it is approved, I'd say.
If it's approved. And do those typically require insurance?
Yes.
They do?
Yes. If you're using, if you're sponsoring an event or if you're engaging in an event in the city, you have to show your certificate of liability insurance.
Okay. Regarding the noticing, who is financially responsible for the noticing, the 500 feet and the mailing? Is that the applicant that's responsible for that?
Typically, yes. Yes. If it is a, if it's a private person who's coming to the counter and submitting an application.
If it's a city-sponsored project or the housing element, the city pays for it.
They will pay, they will pay for the mailing labels, but the city is the one who budgets for the actual mailing out of the notices or whether it's published in the paper.
That's for public and private or just public projects?
For, for any project that is submitted to the city, we're responsible for actually mailing out the notices and the, the amount of what it costs in order to mail them out is taken out of our supplies and budget line item.
It's not charged back to the applicant?
Not for the fee, yes, associated with it. It comes out of our publication line item.
The labeling, they have to?
The labeling, yes, yes.
And that's pretty expensive, isn't it?
It's becoming even more expensive. My line item budget account is increasing because of the noticing procedures and requirements.
What is the typical distance in other cities?
I'm sorry?
What is the typical distance in other cities?
The state law requires a minimum of 300 feet.
So it varies. Some cities with 300, some would do 500. Cities that are less dense tend, can have broader distance because they capture more people that way. You think of how many people live within 300 feet in, say, Old Town, it actually captures a lot of people. And everything to note is with respect to the housing element tonight, that was, there are no mailed notices for that. It's a citywide project. If we were to provide mailed notice, it would have to go to everybody, which would be prohibitively expensive. So consistent with state law and our code, if notices provided through publication.
Now, what typically happens is somebody gets it, they toss it in the trash, and it's, it's gone, and then all of a sudden, there's an article in the newspaper and they go, "Oh, when did this happen?" And they don't even remember tossing it out.
That happens.
That's, that's been very frustrating.
And it becomes our fault. And it becomes our fault, meaning the city.
That's it. That's what I'm saying. It's very frustrating. Why wasn't I told? I want to know. How do we know in this city, almost 25,000 people, who is interested in what? We don't. And it's cost prohibitive to send it out to everybody. If you went from 500 to 1,000, it would be more than double because it would grow expanding. Yeah. Identify the email.
If everybody had one and if we had their address. Any other comments?
But is it, is it within our jurisdiction to direct the distance or does that have to come from council?
It's council. It's an ordinance.
That's correct. It's at the council, city council.
Okay. So if, if, if some citizens want a 1,000-foot notice, they need to besiege the council rather than us to get that changed, is that?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I can remember the more removed you are from the event, 1,000 feet versus 500 feet, the less concerning that is. So I'm not sure expanding it is going to draw that much more interest in the, in the problem.
That is a very good point, Commissioner. Very good point.
The agendas, the agendas are also posted in the library, are they not?
Yes, and every item is posted on the website.
On the website as well.
And out here on the bulletin board.
Yes.
I, I went and talked to the, the folks at the Sun a few, few months ago after there were some complaints about these notices. And they frequently cannot deliver the Sun newspaper to gated communities because the gates are locked and are not given access. If the president of the, of the community wants, wants the Sun delivered, they have to give access to the gate, to the Sun personnel. So that's part of the problem too, I think.
It's not delivered in Leisure World. It's available at a few spots, in front of the administration building, in front of the medical center, clubhouse.
And it hasn't been out there in the last couple of weeks?
Because of the tearing up the street. It's been at clubhouse four the whole time.
Oh, has it?
But it is not delivered to each home in Leisure World. You have to seek it out.
Have to go find it.
I don't know if that could be changed. That would be an interesting thing to ask administration about and have them work with the Sun.
Sure.
Because that might help get the word out about all those things.
There's interesting articles in there about this community that the people in Leisure World really don't pay attention to, they should. Any other questions or concerns from the commission that you'd like to ask? No? Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you very much.
It looks like we won't be meeting next month.
We're dark next month so far.